Call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Escalon City Council, the city of Escalon. Regular meeting February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Would you please join me in this lutear flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Merkin.
Here.
Councilmember Kremick.
Here.
Councilmember Leggero is absent, excused. And then Mayor Protimouse.
Here.
Mayor Swift.
Here. Okay, well, starting out tonight, it sounds like we have an oath of office administered to Travis Sharp, police officer, and I believe this is yours, chief?
It is, and this is one of the happier times I get to address the council, is swearing in a new officer, and in particular, this young man, because it also brings us to full staff.
Right.
With twelve full-time officers now, and so it's, that's even better. Travis Sharp is thirty-two years of age. He resides in Modesto. He has accompanied here tonight by his wife Serena, his son Corbin, his two-week-old daughter Layla.
Lila.
Lila. I knew I was gonna, I asked him how to pronounce it, and I still screwed it up. His mother Tiffany and his grandmother Sharon. Travis grew up in this area and then for a small period, for a period of time, lived in a small town called Noshow, Missouri.
Neo Show.
Neo Show, Missouri. Population right now is about eleven thousand, so. And he graduated high school there. And was, during our interview, we were talking about, you know, the difference between here and Modesto and other places, and he related at the time he was living there in Missouri and how much he enjoyed it. And so I felt that between those conversations, he was gonna be a good fit for our organization and the community. He's attended Modesto Junior College, still hasn't got his degree yet. He needs to work on finishing that. But, and then he's worked in the food industry for a while, and I'm gonna plug a restaurant up the street, Jervisoni's.
Oh, yeah.
I've eaten there many times, and I believe it's a family-owned business. Excellent restaurant, sorry.
Yes, it is.
And he found employment with Pacific Southwest Containers. He was there for eleven years. Was a supervisor there, and then he decided to change careers and go into law enforcement. That was about in two thousand and eighteen. Went to the Police Academy of St. Louis County, graduated there in January of nineteen. He worked briefly in Modesto PD, but that wasn't a fit for him. And then he applied for us in November. I was the number one on our hiring list, and I get to swear him in. His wife and son, I think, are going to be doing the penny, I believe. Well, we'll get on with the swearing in first.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, speak your name. Aye, Travis Sharp. You solemnly swear our firm. That I will support and defend, that I will support and defend, defend the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
Travis Sharp.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation. Without any. Any mental reservation. Reservation. Reservation for a purpose of evasion. For a purpose of evasion. And I will well. And I will. Well. Well. The way this is worked. And faithfully discharge. And faithfully discharge. The duties upon which I am about to. The duties upon which I am about to. Right, please. And now this is yours. What does it mean, Captain? There you go, young man. Open. Be careful. I'm just about to. Okay, it's on Facebook.
Okay. While this is going on, I forgot to mention that Ben Harrison and Travis Sharp, Ben works for us. Apparently grew up together, and one of the reasons why Travis is here.
Huh, fantastic.
Anything you'd like to say, Travis? The floor is yours.
I apologize, a little nervous up there. I appreciate the opportunity of the board, chief, giving me this opportunity again. I look forward to serving and meeting the people of Escalon. Thank you.
Congratulations, Officer Sharp.
Be careful. A lot of crazy people out there.
You know, they are welcome to say if they'd like.
I know, I told you. I also told you I didn't ask you to.
Yeah, I mean, granted, they do have an excuse. I see one kid, okay, bedtime's probably getting pretty close, and so, all right.
Or next door, you go next door and watch paint dry.
Yep, you have a good reason, Officer Sharp. Great to have you on board.
He starts tomorrow with Anthony Harangues.
Fantastic.
Good job.
Fantastic. Okay, consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single motion, unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. For example, on item number two, I will be abstaining on voting on check number nine, six, nine, three.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved to second to approve the consent calendar as is. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Consent calendar passes four to zero. Staff communications.
Mayor and council tonight on your agenda are monthly reports for our treasurer's report, the police department activity, animal control, development services, building, recreation, public works, water department, and the wastewater treatment plant. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have on that, on any of those.
Okay, council members, are there any questions on the staff communication reports tonight?
I have one other item I just wanted to share that I, we did record the community meeting from last Thursday. It is on our YouTube channel. It's not the whole meeting, unfortunately. The camera timed out. It has like the first twenty minutes. There's a gap, and then it has like the last five or six minutes. So a good portion of the meeting, but just so you know, that it is out there and available on our YouTube channel.
Was the audio working?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You know, from what I recall, a lot of the meat of the meeting was in that first twenty or so minutes. A lot of the good questions, a lot of the, you know, the good answers, so I'm hoping that that can still be of utility to anybody who wants to see it on YouTube. So, and again, if there are any questions about the subject. I know, we contacted.
Yeah, I guess I should say, you know, the primary of the community meeting was information on Measure S.
Sure, sure. But they can also ask you, ask the chief, ask any one of us. Granted, we might direct a, you know, a specific detail back to you guys, but the whole idea is to get, make it as transparent and as clear as possible so there's no ambiguity, you know, when people go out to vote, okay? We wanna know what they're voting on, so. We're not the state. Did I say that? I guess I did. I guess I meant it then. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
We have the one item regarding sidewalks located at Hogan Manufacturing along Second Street. We had some sidewalk obstruction and issues there due to some trees. The city moved forward with removing the trees. And we did cut portions of the sidewalk where there were uplifting and stuff to prevent tripping, but there was a portion of the sidewalk that does need to be fully replaced. And we did reach out to Hogan Manufacturing to replace it, and they're not, they're not interested in replacing it due to the trees being planted by the city approximately twenty-five, thirty years ago or so. So with direction from council, we wanted to know if there's anything council wanted to move forward with us on that item, or if the city should just move forward with replacing that portion of the sidewalk ourselves.
You know, I also wanna add on the conversation there. We brought this up to the Hogans. Don't get me wrong, a few months back, four, five, six months, and they had concern. You know, these are city trees that are in the sidewalks. We didn't put the trees there. We didn't ask for the trees. We explained them the situation. We understand you didn't put the trees there, but the trees are on your property. They're adjacent to their parking lot next to the Legion, which is also one of the big reasons the sidewalk needs repaired is all the foot traffic. At the time, the big concern was the trees, so the city kinda headed and did a reach-out, which is something that we don't normally do. We kinda understand the situation. It was a smaller sidewalk. We went ahead, removed all the trees on that side, and had them stumped and grinded, and do not plan on planting trees back, because that was one of the issues. They didn't want the crack back up, and we understood that. Now, we're kind of at the situation to where nobody wants to get the sidewalks taken care of, and we're just kinda in the ordinance where we shouldn't go take care of the sidewalk. It's the homeowner's responsibility, but at this time, it's almost a safety issue to where the sidewalk needs to get fixed. So we just need some kind of direction on, do we keep going after Hogan to do it? Do we, do you want the city to take care of it? It's just, something needs to get happened to the sidewalk soon.
And I feel like, I feel personally that it's a very difficult argument to make, you know, okay, the city's trees were planted by the city, I think it was more like twenty years ago. I saw them going in. I go, that's funny, these are gonna rip up the sidewalk someday. And, but they are the city trees, and so it became, it becomes a hard argument to me to explain to the homeowner or his property owner regardless of who it is. By the way, now it's your problem. And none of you had anything to do with this, you know, the original problem, and that's probably the frustrating part. I think time is of the essence of it. Went to the, the Legion dinner on Saturday night, and oh, yeah. See a lot of people going in there, a lot of people going out, a lot of people, you're just holding your breath as they're, okay, please get off the sidewalk just before the big crack, you know. So, yeah, it's time of the essence. I think under the circumstances, I think that the city takes care of it. I don't know what the rest of council feels, but it'd be great to have a consensus.
I would agree with Mayor Swift. I think under the circumstances, we're in a sensitive situation, and I think it's a bummer that we're fixing it, but at the same time, it's gonna be hard to justify making them fix it, in my opinion, and that's why I would agree with you.
Is there a consensus to give staff this direction, or what do you think?
Fix it.
I have this question. So what, the ordinance says that if the trees grow up and mess the sidewalk up, that it's the homeowner's responsibility, so that's, that's what's on the books now?
So we have an ordinance regarding street trees, and that's typically what street trees are. Although they may be planted by either a developer, contractor, city, once they're planted and put into that property, whoever purchases that property or owns that property becomes responsible for going maintenance as well as the removal and/or replanting. And that's a current ordinance we have. It's very similar to a lot of ordinances that other cities have. It's cities' ways of making sure that those type of, those trees are taken care of and replaced if somebody pulls them out, and that's just, it's been on the books for many years.
And our sidewalk ordinance is very similar to the same thing as trees. The sidewalk is a responsibility of the homeowner business as well.
Has there been cases in the past year or so where this has happened and we've had to enforce that ordinance?
Yes, yeah.
Do we enforce it? Like, have we, have we made consent, kind of a consented like this before, or what's the?
Sometimes we have, yes.
When it typically comes to residential properties.
Huh?
In regards to like residential properties, if we receive a complaint that somebody's tripped on the sidewalk and they give us the location, we follow up with the property owner as in the ordinance, and we advise them that there's a trip hazard on their property, and we advise them that they need to repair it. It's, it's protocol of our risk management authority that their preference has always been that it be property owner's responsibility, not the city. It's also adopted in the state codes, state highway.
Street and highway code.
Street and highway code as well, that it's, it's state law as well that we put that responsibility on the property owner, so our ordinance reflects that.
I personally think it needs, we need to get it fixed because of safety issue. I just think it's very unfortunate that we have a business owner that doesn't wanna have to fix it. But with that being said, when it comes to safety, we can't look to the side.
Yeah. I think the biggest issue, one of the biggest issues also is tree type. There are neighborhoods in town that have street trees that do not have the traditional habit of going under a sidewalk and lifting the sidewalk up. There are situations in town that we have street trees that that's all that they will ever do is break up sidewalks. And so again, there's, you know, the choice of that tree, I think also bears a lot of responsibility on who is making that choice. And in this case, it was on the city's end. Not nobody here, but it was on the city's end twenty years ago to choose that tree that had that nasty habit of bringing up sidewalks.
Are we setting some sort of precedent if we don't enforce the Hogans to fix that sidewalk, even though that's technically something we have as a, on the books? If other people, this comes up, and now they wanna say, well, you didn't make them do it, I'm not gonna do it. Is that, that something that could arise?
Sure.
Yes.
That's something that could arise.
Is that a concern to anybody up here besides me?
If we put the wrong tree in.
It concerns me when you look at the property along Highway one-twenty, and you've got those sycamore trees there. Those sycamore trees that were planted probably when Escalon population was twelve-hundred. And the people that buy that, I don't know if that's part of the disclosure that the realtor has to tell them that, oh, yeah, by the way, if the sidewalk breaks, you're responsible for it, you know, so.
Well, I'm not gonna.
Have some issues with that.
I, I'm not gonna rock the boat on this. I think it is a, it's interesting how we're so quick to, you know, just go, yeah, let's, let's just do it. But another thing is, maybe this is another time when we should really address this whole trees and the sidewalk issue and really decide if we ever wanna put another tree in any sidewalk that ever goes into this town, because this always comes up.
And we have.
I think with the staff you have right now, that's been the focus.
I mean, I think that we need to just nip this in the bud, and we need to put something in writing that says, we're not gonna put trees in sidewalks anymore. Even if it looks nice for twenty years, it always comes up and is a, it's kind of a pickle every time, so. That would be my opinion, but other than that, I'd be in consensus to have the city just fix it, get it done.
I think we're on this.
We do have landscape ordinance as well that, that gives the strip, landscape strips and medians and those type of things that separate your commercial projects, and that's where the trees should be going in your separation of properties along the property line. We have, you know, five or ten-foot requirements, depending on where they're located in the city, where that would be made for landscaping or to address stormwater, and that's the more appropriate place to put the trees, not in the sidewalk. So we have moved away from that, definitely because of some of the issues we've been having. And other cities have too, so.
Sounds like we're on the same page on this, so consensus to go ahead and get it taken care of. So, is there anything else under staff communications?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, very good. Matters presented from the audience. This time, the public may address the city council on any item, not on the agenda, but that is within the authority of the council. The speaker's limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the council is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. And whoever would like to speak first, please do so.
Good evening, council. Kurt Danziger, three-eight-nine Noni. Is there a differentiation between commercial and residential when it comes to trees and sidewalk repairs?
Well, I think the difference for me personally is I've got two trees that ruin my sidewalks.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking about the ordinance.
I don't believe so, no.
So.
It's property owner, sidewalk.
Because it sounds to me as though if I own a tree, I'll just wait for it to get so bad and a tripping hazard that I'm gonna call Justin and say, hey, do you think you ought to do something about that and have him fix it?
We're talking about two different things here, Kurt. This is a commercial piece of property. The tree was planted on by the city. Now, my personal property and yours that have trees on it were your choice or the previous owner put them there, and you bought and.
No, that was, that was the city's choice when they, when they made the developer form an LLD. So the city has put that tree there. I don't care if I have trees there or it isn't. And, and quite frankly, I take care of my own. I just had it trimmed today. Nobody goes through our neighborhood in an LLD and trims trees and brings, brings them up so that they're not hitting cars and what have you. I just, I just wanna know whether we should change the ordinance so it reflects everybody as in the same boat. You know, all those trees that are in Terabella or Bellaterra and Westwood Country, those were all part of the development required by the city to put those trees in there. And so I, I see sidewalks coming up, and I know that people have replaced them, areas of sidewalks there. But if it's a situation where they can let it go now, and you really got a one-foot hill there, maybe they should do that, and then the city will be responsible for it. So I, I just think you gotta be careful. I mean, I don't know how much concrete's gonna cost Hogans there, and it probably isn't fair to Hogan, but it's, it's not fair to anybody that didn't plant a tree. So it should be even across the board. What's fair is fair.
Yeah, totally agree with that. Oakdale has had to grapple with this an awful lot because they've had a lot of issues in certain neighborhoods such as Virchell Hill, where you have a city tree. They've told the homeowner, you're responsible for it, and it has been a mess. Because of course, the homeowner's gonna make the argument, wait, I didn't choose that kind of tree there. And it's a winning argument, and it's a winning argument. But you're right, it's, it's one of those also where if you start replacing every single tree, then that's gonna really start racking up a bill. Pistachio trees, which you guys have over in Bellaterra, they don't necessarily have the habit of breaking things up. However, even in Oakdale, what the city has finally begun to allow some homeowners to do is if they don't want the tree there, they can take it out to avoid the problem altogether. I'm not suggesting we do that here, and I don't actually know what the ordinance, maybe we, they could, I don't know. You know, but there is, there has had to be developed some flexibility over the years with this issue because it is so thorny, and that's one of the things that Oakdale's done.
I don't think it should be thorny. I think it's, it's thorny because it's situations like this come up where, you know, and the type of tree and things like that. So I, I think I would move, I would offer the same consensus up here that the city take care of this this time, even though I do think it sets a precedent, which I think is what Kurt's alluding to. But I would also say that we need staff to really start crafting a new ordinance that addresses the trees and the sidewalks for residential, commercial, so that everybody knows what's going on. I think, is that fair?
I think it's not a bad idea.
One last little side note. In those districts, not in the city generally, when a tree dies, as you know, either you or the city comes out and tears it down and then plants another one, can it be an option not to plant anything?
I think there have been options sometimes now, more recently.
So the option we've been providing is if a tree is removed and the property owner doesn't wanna plant it back in the original spot, we've been recommending that they plant it up in their own landscaping. That way, it is in their landscaping, a part of their landscaping. And we did update in the last few years our list of trees to take away any trees that have root issues and, and cause those type of issues, and just ask them to plant it up in their yard instead. And I don't think we've had anybody object to that, so they just replace the tree somewhere else on their property, which we've been open to.
I'd object to that, because I personally don't even, you know, feng shui, the sun blows or shades the street, not my house. And if that tree passed away, you know, I'd ask Justin or whoever to come out and grind it. I wouldn't put another tree on my short lawn, you know, that I have in front there. So I would look for relief for many requirement to replace a tree anywhere on my property. And I think that should be an option.
I would lean towards if the tree is planted on a city sidewalk, that it's the city's responsibility. To me, that just makes sense. I don't know why the homeowner's responsibility extends into the sidewalk to maintain that tree. I think that's.
Sidewalk's on their property as well. I mean, that's their property, even though we have the easement, that's the public right of way. It's still, it's, you're still on that property.
Oh, the sidewalk is.
In most of the time, it's not necessarily that. In most of the time, it's not necessarily that, it's not in the same cases the commercial where the trees are sometimes even in their front yards that are affecting the sidewalk.
So that would be a situation where they're.
Their roots are growing that are affecting the sidewalk.
Well, it's a tough one, but, yeah.
A, a, and I would feel that my tree, if it uplifted the sidewalk, is my responsibility to fix that sidewalk, whether you grind it down or you, the, the city has a program, I think, where you can contact whoever you use and they, and they come out for, I guess, a reasonable price and replace it. I, I mean, I can't see it costing that much, but, but, um, you, you know, I would prefer not to have the tree, you know, and if I was gonna replace that sidewalk once, I, I wouldn't want that.
Yeah.
Another tree back in there, any kind, I don't, I don't care. So anyway, that was my thought.
I appreciate it, Kurt. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak this evening before we move on to administrative matters?
It's on, there's an item on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, okay. So seeing none, we're gonna move on to administrative matters, and I think Tammy, you had a comment regarding, uh, moving a couple items around, no?
Actually, Dominique did.
Dominique, I'm sorry.
Going to request that we move item six regarding the state congestion management program up to as item four, um, and get that one completed and then we can move forward as.
So we're gonna take, we're gonna take item six and then we'll go back.
Okay, is there any objection to that, council members?
No.
No?
No.
No? Councilmember Merkin?
Nope, makes sense.
Okay, item six.
Travis, you're coming, SJ cog. This'll be really quick. So, pretty much, um, based on Prop one eleven and Measure K, um, SJ cog as a CMA is required to produce a, a regional congestion management program. In the regional, regional management program, we encompass both federal and state congestion management programs, statutes, so, um, but however, with SB seven forty-three comes along, and that changes the performance metric from LOS to VMT, which no longer aligns with the state congestion management program. As such, um, SJ cog would, is moving forward with recommending that we opt out of the state congestion management program. However, we can't just opt out, we have to have resolutions from our jurisdictions to opt out, and that's the purpose why I am bringing this forward to you, to ask for you to approve a resolution to opt out of the state CMP.
Now, you said the metrics are antiquated. How are they antiquated?
Well, not antiquated, but more or less the type, so currently its level of service is the, is, um, the, the performance metric used to rate, you know, uh, roadways, intersections, right? But then with Senate Bill seven forty-three, that actually, that actually changes, so that's a sequel change that changes it from LOS to vehicle miles traveled, and that is what is, um, now required, um, starting July first, and that's why we're trying to move forward to opt out of the state congestion management program.
So what does CMA, CMP stand for?
Congestion management program.
And then the VMT?
Vehicles miles traveled.
And LOS?
Levels of service. Thank you.
Is there, are you suggesting anything to replace that? Well, the new, we have to go by the new performance metric anyway, so actually the crux of Prop eleven is.
So what happens is after we opt out, we essentially, um, we still have to abide by federal guidelines, so we, um, the goal is to create a steering committee, and that steering committee will not only encompass federal, but also some, uh, maybe input from our jurisdictions to provide some informational, um, to, uh, to the program itself.
Okay.
More or less, the main purpose is to, one, reduce administrative time from the jurisdiction to SJ cog, and two, to reduce, uh, to eliminate a, uh, kind of a statute that would put at risk monies administered by SJ cog. Um, if a, uh, let's say a jurisdiction is found, uh, non-compliant with RCMP, and typically that, what that means is, uh, if you have like an LOS ERF at intersection or congestion or, uh, segment within, so let's say one twenty is LOS ERF, so.
Uh, to be completely candid, what other cities in this county have, uh, gone along with this so far?
So, um, uh, maybe I should step back. So previously before taking it to, um, our councils, we actually met with, um, the TAC, the MNF, uh, the executive committee, uh, and also, uh, we took it to our board. Our board, of course, Councilmember Merkin's on our board, knows, uh, we're aware about it, and they approved it. So with that said, you actually, you and Mintika actually are tonight, along with, I met with the city of Lowdy, Stockton, San Juanquin County, um, they're all in the future. Everyone seems to be on board with the idea of opting out, cause honestly, there's no, there's no financial, there's no impact of this, and you can, and cities only benefit from this.
Council members, are there any questions? I'm kinda leaning towards Councilmember Merkin on this one, if he, if you'd like to give any input on this.
No, I think we've covered it well. I mean, uh, there, there's no downside to it.
Who sponsored the bill?
I'm sorry?
Who sponsored seven thirty?
Seven forty-three.
Seven forty-three?
To be honest, that, that is a, that is a good head turner. Um, I'd have to get back to you on that, um, but is, it's a state, it's a state require, it's a state senate bill.
It's a bill that's been passed and, and it's in government currently.
Correct, correct, correct. With, with.
We don't know who, who brought the bill.
To be honest, I, um, I don't have a good answer for you right now. I couldn't get back to you on that, but it was passed in two thousand seventeen, and it was, it wasn't going through.
Steinberg.
Steinberg, two thousand thirteen.
Thank you.
Steinberg.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is an actual item, so I will need a motion if, uh, the council chooses to adopt this resolution.
I would move on staff's recommendation.
Second.
I moved and seconded to move on staff res, uh, recommendation to adopt, uh, this resolution electing for the city of Escalon to be exempt from the state congestion management program as described in the California Government Code, Section six five zero eight eight, in conjunction with San Juanquin Council Government's effort to achieve county-wide exemption. Is there any debate on the motion on the table? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes four to zero.
So much.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening, and now we'll move to item four.
Mayor and council before you tonight is, um, for consideration to adopt a resolution of a summary vacation and approve purchase and sell agreement with Chandler Enterprises Incorporated. Staff has negotiated the attached purchase and sell agreement with Chandler Enterprises. Under the terms of this agreement, Chandler would purchase from the city APNs two two seven zero nine zero four five zero and four six zero and the alleyway separating the two parcels. In exchange for this property, Chandler would pay five thousand dollars and construct the public improvements described in Exhibit B of the agreement that would benefit the city and surrounding properties. Chandler has proposed the development to take place in three phases. Phase one of the project, a parking lot of approximately seventeen parking spaces, which will be deed restricted for public use. For access, a, a paved part, walkway will extend from the dedicated public parking spaces through to First Street. The parking lot will be required to meet city standards, which among other items include paved parking, fencing, landscaping, underground storm drain facilities, and parking lot lighting. Phase two of the project includes updates to the lumberyard site, including landscaping, sidewalks, and additional private parking. Phase three of the project includes the construction of a commercial building with a paved private parking. The city feels that these proposed improvements will be a positive change for everyone from surrounding property owners, businesses, and to the residents and citizens utilizing the area. Phase one of the improvements has a timeline to be completed of twenty-four months. The alley that is included in the property to be acquired by Chandler is an excess right of way not needed for street purposes and must be vacated in order to transfer the property. To accomplish the vacation, the attached resolution of summary of vacation would, must be adopted by the city council and recorded against the property. And that's what I have for the council tonight.
Hey, are there, are there any opening questions or comments from council?
Uh, first one I'd say is, uh, the work that you guys have done so far on the lumberyard looks great, it's, uh, in the building, and I think it looks fantastic, and I'm excited for the future of this project.
I'd like to get the public involved in this one. Is there anybody who'd like to come up and speak on this subject? Please, sir.
I have no problem with the, the property. We discussed this a few years ago about doing this, the property being sold, and the only problem I have is I have a business there that we access, a tow business where we bring cars and trucks in and motorhomes. If that is where we cannot access, where our tow truck could come off of Roosevelt, come through there and drop off in our shop, a vehicle, and then leave out of Center Street or vice versa, a lot of the farmers and, and around here and stuff, their trucks and stuff, we won't be able to get them in there to be able to work on them.
Who, who owns the alley right now?
We do.
That's still the, okay, okay, that's still the city, okay. And do you know how long, how wide is the, the ingress and egress off Center Street?
Nineteen feet.
It, it's not very big, and during the day, um, there, there's another business over there that uses both sides of the roads, and there's cars on both sides, which is the damn studio, which they're always parking on in front of my house and everything. I don't, does, I don't care anything about that.
Picture the alley there with the truck in it, you could see the way.
But to be able to take a tow truck, thirty foot tow truck, and then back in the thirty foot motorhome off of a nineteen foot street with cars on both sides, that's gonna be pretty tough.
I gotta know what you're doing, I imagine, so, okay.
But I mean, I'm not composed of anything, but understand if the seventeen parking spots where they go are gonna close off the alleyway that goes between my two properties. If I don't have that, there's a couple of things. One, I won't be able to access out, I would have to leave out in between those two cars and any vehicle, whether it's a motorhome or whatever, when there's cars on both sides, even just driving through there, cause I take my motorhome through there a few times, it's thirty-two foot, and I tell you, it's, it's not easy to get through there with the tree on the side there and then the cars all around, and it's just, i- it's gonna be really, really difficult. And the other thing of it is, is the, uh, presto disposal. Uh, they pick up my dumpster there. Obviously, the city is, doesn't want me to put the dumpster out there, and of course, when he buys it, the property and everything, he probably won't want it out there either, but I need an access way, if the alley was plugged off, then the dump truck, we were talking about it the other day, he says, "Well, if you parked it in the alley, the dumpster, to where it was pointing straight towards the Escalon lumber," then he says, "I could back up into that space and I could come and get the dumpster and dump it." But other than that, I don't know how you would pick the dumpster up.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't, I don't know where to go from there, other than that, we, we had discussed that quite a few years ago and everything, and everybody told me, says, "We were actually going out there and, uh, one of my friends, he was at a tractor out there, and we were, uh, going over the land and, cause there was so many potholes and everything, straighten it out, and we always kept it weeded and everything." And the city came out and says, "For us not to do that, don't clean it up, don't get rid of the potholes and everything." So we'd stopped, and, uh, then they said, we talked, we had this meeting and everything, and, and he said, "Well, we're just gonna gravel it and everything, use it for parking." I says, "Okay," and then all of a sudden, now this comes up. I have no problem with anybody buying the property, that's, that's fine, anybody's all of that, but just the access for me, my business.
Yeah.
How am I gonna continue to operate my business like I am?
So, um, are there any, is there any other comments on this issue, maybe some input to this situation with this issue?
Well, when staff talked with the engineer, um, I mean, he thought that there was room there that could be worked, um, for that access. In regards to the garbage trucks, um, I don't know, Justin can probably speak more.
I actually talked to Jim about the situation, and if for some reason a wall did go up on that side, as long as the dumpster was up against that wall, they'd pull in, but then they'd have to re, back out to get out in, or the business would have to push the trash can down closer to the street the day of trash to be picked up and then push it back where they would want it.
Yeah.
I mean, there's definitely a way the trash can could get, um, be dumped there, it just may take a little bit more work on the business owner's side.
But the dumpster, the gilting can come in and dump it and back, I mean, that's what they do where I'm at too, so that's, I mean, I, I think just push the whole dumpster full of stuff.
I mean, of course, they're not cans of reversing, but in some situations, I mean, just at our shop alone, they have to pull in at least forty feet forward and then back out onto, uh, uh, Main Street, which is way crazier than on us over by Roosevelt area.
What street would that be that you're saying that you would have to move out to?
Uh, would the streets that's adjacent to.
Center.
Center Street.
Center Street.
Yes, sir. So you would have to push the dumpster towards Center Street? He would turn right on Center and then turn there and then dump it or drive into the alley and dump it and reverse out.
Yeah, but he should be able to back in, cause I know that's what he does where I'm at, you know, I mean, or not back it. Go and pull forward and then back out. Okay.
And we would just have to be, as a city, make sure that that's always clear for the dumps, you know, Gilton two go in and out to do.
Yeah, okay. Is there any other input on this item? Dave?
Dave Willis, four two five, Sultana Way. I think you ought to tread lightly on this because this is an, an access that's been there for years, and to take that access away, I don't think you can legally do it because all the time you hear over on the, on the coast, somebody buys some property that cuts off access to the beach, the first thing they do is turn around and sue the property owner and make him given access. I think this would fall pretty much under the, something very similar to that. He's had access there for years. Now, if they're gonna put a wall up there, I think they should put a break in the wall and then eliminate some of those parking spots, so he has the access that he needs, you know, in and out, cause you know, to, to, to make, to make it more difficult for him to move his dumpster one way or the other is, is not right. I think he has a, a legitimate right to access both ways, cause it's been there for years. You might, you might wanna be careful about that. Thank you.
Do you want to comment on that at all?
Other comments?
Mr. Willis is referring to prescriptive easement, but a, a person can't have a prescriptive easement over public property, so that doesn't apply. So there's no right to, there's no, you can't just gain an easement over, over public property.
Well, he doesn't have a claim against it because it's not an easement, it's a public property, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, the bottom line is, I think Dave's point is that it's somehow damaging this individual is what he's trying to bring out, and I think it's an issue we have to figure out a solution to, because while I don't disagree with any of the project, I think the gentleman involved in the project is an honorable guy and does a great work, we've seen his stuff, he, he's doing a great job making our town look better, but at the same time, we can't throw this individual under the bus. We need to address his issue and find a solution, because I agree with, uh, Dave, it's just not, uh, it's not a reasonable thing to do to somebody. So what's the damage of leaving those two parking places open there? Is that, is, what would that be a problem for if in fact that's what we decide to do? What's the negative side of that?
Well, then they're exiting out onto some property that they don't own.
And, and I think it would, it would be more than two, two, um, spaces, it could potentially be three.
Three, okay. Well?
Yeah, cause otherwise you're gonna be allowing tow trucks to go through a private parking lot to get to public property? Is that how I'm seeing it?
Yeah. Well, it's, I mean, the alleyway is an access.
I mean, you probably would still wanna have the tow trucks go through Center Street if, if, even if you're gonna have a safety gate.
Vehicles, they've gotta get in one way or the other, and then you have to exit one way or the other.
So if they're backing in, just like, well, Gilton would be driving in, but if the, if the tow trucks are backing in, then they're just driving out. Is there any other input on this item? This is an actual item, uh, which means I would ultimately need a motion. Counsel?
I would move on staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution of summary vacation and approved purchase and sale agreement with Chandler Enterprises Incorporated. Is there any debate on the mo- Is there any debate on the motion that's on the table now?
What are we saying here? We're gonna ignore the other, the businessman who came here asking for a solution to his problem? We're just gonna say, "Okay, we're sorry"?
I think what they're asking right now is, do we approve the sale of the property?
I have no problem selling the property.
Now, does that mean that we don't continue to pursue any options? No, that doesn't mean that at all. This is just to pursue, this is just to sell the property.
You sell the property before you resolve this issue, what leverage are we gonna have in that situation?
That's a good question. Have there been discussed any other items, or any, anything else that can be done in this situation? Short of, because obviously you don't wanna have the tow trucks going from the property, you know, from the, from the parking lot area, you don't wanna have that. That might be a little messy.
Yeah, I'm, um...
And we're talking about mostly flatbeds nowadays, right? Flatbeds, most of, yeah.
So, um... In talking with staff, so the business owner does own a property on both sides of that? So I don't know if there's potential of using one, the others, the, um... I guess that would be the south side of the alleyway, on this side, to use it for access of turning around, or assisting in backing in and pulling out, um, into the alley. The other thing that I saw on Center Street, there's a couple of big trees at the end of the alley that potentially you could remove and give a better...
Whose trees are they? Are they street trees?
Yes.
Street trees.
Are they street trees? City street trees?
Yes.
They're monsters, too.
Okay.
Yes. They would give you a better line of sight for those instances if somebody is backing in that alley.
They're not, they're not homeowners' trees, they're street trees.
Well, I, I mean, that, that area is so, is much older. Um, the, the trees are actually on the street side of the sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
Well, let's ask the, the business owner if that would resolve his issue. But if they remove the trees on that side of, on...
Center Street?
Center Street, would that solve the problem?
Mitigate it at least.
Probably, the, the trees that you're talking about are positioned to back further. Of course, the homeowner next door, they may love the trees, I know they have to trim them every year, but I hate those trees. If my wife was here, you'd be hearing a lot from her, because she has to clean up all the leaves, because they, all the leaves blow over in our yard, and then she has to clean all the leaves up, all, all along.
Are they sycamores?
Yes.
Get them out.
And...
Get them out.
If, the, the, the only problem is it's during the day. If it was in the evening, when the tow trucks drop off, it wouldn't be so bad, because there's cars on both sides from the dance studio.
Right.
Now, if I had to have a tow truck come in there, and he was to pull in and drop it off, how's he gonna get out?
But we could, we could make sure that the alley has access, and if we need to, we can go three, four, five feet on either side without approaching into so much parking of the homeowners, to keep clear, if that was the case. I mean, last thing we wanna do, if one of the aisles is blocked, to have obstacles on the other end, we would make sure that there is some type of clearance for sure.
But isn't the dance studio mostly in the maybe late afternoon, early evening?
It's all day long, and in the evening also.
It is throughout the day.
Driving a little business. Yeah, it is all the time. And the one tree that, talking about pulling in there, it's actually, I think, the neighbor's tree, which actually my wife takes care of and everything, you have to trim it back and everything, because it, it gets too big and everything, you can't get in and out of the alley, but it's more of a bush than it is actually a tree. But it's just, the road is not qualified, these, these, this home that I have there was built over a hundred years ago, and so is my shop. So these roads are not that big, so you can access things that's not made for this type of stuff. And although the properties around there are all commercial, they're not residential, even though that they're residences. The one beside my shop and the one behind, and I think probably the one behind that also is commercial. I know I talked about building a building and extending it back there, the city one day, and I come down there, and I says, "How far, what's, how far do I have to build back away from the, the fence line?" And they said, "Well, this is commercial property, you can build right up to the fence." I go, "Really?" "Okay." So I talked to my neighbor back there, and he says, "Yeah, that's okay when you get around to doing it," which I haven't done it yet, I don't have time, but...
You mean, you mean like, in the alley, or?
Well, where the alley between my two properties go, in the back of that property, I used to use it before I bought the property behind it. I used to use it back there for a lot of my, I guess, containers and stuff, that I would store stuff. And so I was going to build a building back there, and I just haven't got around it, I don't have time, there's no way. I work seven days a week now, I just, I couldn't do it, it's just no way. But hopefully here in the future, I'll be able to do that, and that's what I'm looking forward towards. But it's just right now, it's just, I got so much work, and I can't find employees. I can't find, I cannot find employees.
I know the feeling.
It's just, it's terrible.
And probably every businessperson in here knows the feeling.
Yeah. What hours, what hours are you most subject to get a delivery from a tow truck? Usually eight to five. Eight to five. But we do have some people that break down on the roads and stuff like that, and they'll come in after hours, and they'll drop a vehicle off. But eight to five is standard generally? Yeah. I just wonder if we could build it and just have a gate there that would stay open at a certain amount of time, then be closed every day. Yeah. I mean, you'd get your parking, but at the same time, we don't distress your situation. So I don't know, what do you think? I mean, is that something we could look at?
The gate where?
Where those three parking lots were gonna be eliminated, just leave them there.
The spots?
Just leave them there, and just have a gate there that's closed after certain hours. And he lives right there next to it, if there's an emergency, he can walk over and unlock it, and bring his truck in and shut it. But there'll probably be cars in there, is the other problem.
Well, the, yeah.
There'll be cars in there at that time, probably, because that will be used to facilitate the hall and all the other functions in that immediate vicinity, so it's a bit of a dilemma. Yeah, yeah, because the Portuguese Hall, when they have their events and stuff over there, that place fills up. Yeah, it does. Everywhere.
So, so this is all of your prop, and you could look up on the screen, this is your property back here too, right?
Uh, trying to...
So here's the back of your transmission shop here?
Yeah, and the property behind you.
Back here, there's a...
Yeah.
It tightens up right there. It's a bottleneck.
I think most of the stuff comes down on a slide bed, couldn't it?
You can see how small Center Street is there, and you can imagine there's cars on either side.
On both sides, yeah.
I mean, to be able to back in there, I, I don't even know if a tow truck could pull something in there, because he'd have to get all the way over to the person on the right's property to be able to try to turn enough to get in there. How about a loading zone? How about a loading zone in front of his business? What if we had a loading zone in, in front of your business, where cars couldn't park, other than for commercial application, like dropping off a, another vehicle or something like that?
You mean on First Street?
Yeah.
First Street?
Would that work? But then, we still have to say for if it's, I'm, I'm just making... Sure. Something larger than it possibly is, what if somebody drops a motorhome off there that's thirty-six feet long? Right. Now, we have to have some way, if it don't move, to be able to back it up onto First Street. Right. And then pull it around. Put it in the shop, okay. And then try to ring it around there, and I, I don't know.
Do you, do you guys have like a equipment that moves vehicles that are not...
I, I use either my forklift, or I got some quads and stuff, I, I... But the other problem with that is, is the way my lifts are, they're pointed towards...
First Street.
No, uh, they're pointed out towards Pioneer. So if...
In Prospect.
Prospect, I'm sorry, Prospect, and if they did come back in there, I, there's no way, we would have to try to back it in and put it back far enough, which would probably be all the way to where the alley is, to be able to get it up on the lifts and everything. You'd almost have to come out and look at it, it's just, it's, I'm not trying to restrict anything of his and everything to do and everything, I just need a access to drop stuff off. Sometimes I have a bunch of cars that come in, I might have eight, ten cars come in one day, and then they may not have any come in for maybe two weeks, it's just, it's, you never know.
Yeah.
I guess the question I have is, is it gonna be, if there, a wall goes up there that blocks the alley, is it theoretically possible for you still to receive your, your vehicles? You know, it's just gonna be more difficult, right?
During the day?
Right, it's, it's gonna be more difficult, but it's still possible.
Um, you'd have to get a tow truck that was thirty foot long, and as long as a motorhome is, or a truck or something that's in this facility, and go out there and try to back it in, and see if you could do that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't wanna do it. I mean, people have says, "Oh, yeah, I'm a truck driver, I'm in this, I'm that, I can do that and everything," but yeah.
I mean, and I don't wanna diminish, I appreciate you showing up and expressing your concerns. And I, I, I wish there was a more obvious solution to this. And I know it's a tough one, I, I don't have an answer for you, and I'm not sure what, what is gonna happen with this, but, yeah, it's, it's a tricky one.
Well, my thought, like I say, I know, Justin, you talked about a couple of options on Second, Center Street. I don't think we should let, whatever we do tonight with vacating and approving the purchase, I don't think we should let it go, the notion of trying to find some kind of a way to compromise to make his business flow, for lack of a better word, you know, a little better.
And I hope he does buy the property, because he's doing a good job over there, he's taking...
We just have to keep in mind, too, that, I mean, he is purchasing a property, so the new owner would have a say in it also.
Well, naturally, 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 yeah. So, so for the moment, what is on the table is, again, the motion to adopt the resolution of summary vacation and approved purchase and sale agreement with Chandler Enterprises Incorporated. Is there any further debate on the motion? Keep in mind the other issues that we've talked about, of trying to find a way to get a compromise, or find a way to make something work to then make, make this gentleman's life a little easier as well, okay? And we're all Escalonians, we all care about this area, we all care about this town, and I know, I think that's what's gonna make something happen, so that we're, we're all gonna be able to live together here. Is there any other discussion on the motion on the table?
I'd just like to say that I, I think the person who's buying the property is gonna be doing a great job, but I think we're, we're not really doing justice here until we resolve it, before you pass forward. I think it's, it's not right to pass this forward without resolving this issue. This issue should be reserved, I mean, not reserved, but resolved, before we move forward.
Okay.
And I agree.
Thank you.
I agree. There's, there's other issues that lie with this property, it's not just the access.
Yep.
Property line issues that, there's several property owners that are not aware of where the property line really is, and that's going to affect them.
We need to, we need to get it all up there.
And cheated, and cheated, and cheated, and cheated over the years.
Okay.
That whole area has not been...
Been surveyed?
Well, it's not been dealt with, you know, that's city property. It has not been dealt with like city property. And, and who's gonna, who's taking the baggage, right here? And I'm not the person that's trying to come into town and be the bad guy. The last thing I wanna do is see this guy go out of business.
Right.
That's the last thing I wanna do. But at, but at the end of the day, you know, I'm dealing with the Portuguese Hall, you know, that, that's another...
Can of worms.
You know, can of worms, it's just a total disaster. If anybody was around Saturday night, and, you know, over occupancy, parking illegal, parking on private property, I mean, we can go on and on and on and on, and it's just something that we're just turning a blind eye to.
Yeah, I think our bigger issue is we have a parking problem.
Serious.
Yeah.
And, and people that have, like, the Azores Hall needs to step up and deal with their situation.
They need to purchase.
Either go rent a community center, or they have big, big functions like that.
Yeah.
Or buy the land on... Or buy the land on McKenry and put a parking lot over there.
Jamie, is, is he being recorded correctly, or does he need to come on the microphone? Do you mind coming on the microphone real quick?
I'm talking.
Wow. So I'm gonna make the assumption that you are against this motion then, tonight?
Well, I, I just think that it needs to be, just to pass it to, for, for us, I mean, for me to purchase the piece, and then have to deal with the baggage afterwards. We're just kicking the can down the road.
Do you feel, right.
If we come to an agreement, well, we don't.
Do you feel that there's a way to, in other words, for dealing with these other issues, is it better off to be dealing with them with, with Chandler opening the property, in your opinion, or the city owning the property?
Well, my, my, I, I, my, my opinion is... If we have parking, if we have parking, and we eliminate three spaces, and we still have to pull a, a tow truck out onto that parking area, there's only going to be a twenty foot turn radius, or twenty foot, um, space there to turn the, the tow truck. So it's either twenty foot here, or thirty foot on Center Street. I mean, and again, I'm not, you know, there, there's liability issues that come, come to mind as far as pulling tow trucks out into a public, into a public parking area. Who's gonna be, who's gonna carry that liability? Who's gonna carry that responsibility?
By the way, see, you could've got up here and kept talking. No, do you want to?
No, I, I, again, I, I think there's, there's issues here that, again, I, I don't wanna get into a situation where we pass this, and then, you know...
Unfinished business.
I end up, oh, yeah, there's unfinished business, and, and, you know, again, it's just, let's deal with it now.
I'm getting the feeling that, I'm getting the feeling that what you're saying also is that maybe this thing isn't ready to be pulled out of the oven yet.
That's what I'm saying.
In terms of the issues?
I obviously wanna move forward, I make, I'm, I'm, you know, this is, this is something that's going to either make the development move forward, or we just deal with the situation that we have, and then the city has to deal with that piece. So it's either we move forward and deal with the situation, or the city leave it the way it is, and deals with the situation. So, I, I mean...
In other words, the city resolved the issues out of there first?
They're, they're, how are you gonna resolve them?
I don't know, we've just been having, trying to figure out how to resolve them.
I don't wanna pass, I, I want the motion to pass, and then we, I guess we deal with it, because I, I don't wanna...
Yeah.
I don't wanna have to come back, I, I don't wanna end up losing out on the situation.
Right.
I don't think you're gonna lose it on the situation.
I mean, there's some tough, there's gonna be some tough decisions that are gonna have to be made, because we're not gonna be able to make everybody happy.
Right.
We've been talking about this now for how long?
Couple of years.
And this is the first time this has come up?
In regards to what?
This, what it's gonna do to this business?
No, it's not, no, yeah. When we talked about it in two thousand seventeen, when we were, um, abandoning the street, I believe that access came up, um, from this business also.
Uh, Kirk, did you have some input?
I was just saying, you're selling it to the wrong person, you should sell it to him, and then work out a deal with him.
Well, in two thousand seventeen, that was put out there.
I don't wanna, I think we could keep going around in circles, figuring out this and that and the other, and the many problems that we're gonna have to deal with, but I am one hundred percent in favor of moving forward with this project and development, and I think that we should pass this motion, and then we should deal with what comes up after it, because the alternative is not as, uh, is not as good in my mind.
Well, I think that the important thing is if everybody is put on, gets on the table together, like I say, there's, it's probably not gonna be a situation where everybody's gonna be a hundred percent happy.
Correct.
And there's probably gonna be a situation where we're gonna all need to compromise somehow. So the only issue that remains at this point is, do you go with the purchase now? Do you go with the, adopting the resolution now, or do you wait and work out these other issues? Other hand, you know, in the meantime. So, again, it all depends on how we all trust each other, and as Escalonians, to actually follow through on what we say we're gonna do, and try to find a way to work this out, so... Is there any further debate on the motion? Again, over here, we do have a motion on the table to adopt the resolution of summary vacation and approved purchase and sale agreement with Chandler Enterprises Incorporated.
So is there gonna be any language in this motion that addresses what we've been talking about the last twenty minutes?
If you would like to bend it, yeah.
I mean, we have to have some kind of language in here. Uh, I want, obviously, I'd love him to buy the property and do what he's doing, he's doing a great job, but at the same time, you can't throw him under the bus. So the language should be included in this, I think, the purchase can go ahead with the, with the acknowledgement, the city will resolve this issue. You can't just throw him out there, he's a businessman, he has a business. If you're gonna damage him, who's gonna pay those damages? Because you'll probably get sued, because you're taking away his livelihood.
I, but what if you put the word "resolve" in there, and we cannot resolve it?
Then you shouldn't be doing it. If you cannot make a, a project, a good one, is it okay to go ahead with it?
That's in everyone's opinion.
So therefore we might identify the area as is?
Well, that might be enough.
Or you sort of ban all, get approved then, without... Van Paul get approved then, without no parking whatsoever? How, how did that happen? We're, we're dealing with that?
Wasn't here.
That out for now?
Wasn't here.
And I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, that those are, those are things that we should be learning from.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think that's what you're trying to say is, let's learn, and let's, let's improve.
Let's not continue the bad habit.
Right.
There's gotta be a solution here, we just haven't hit, hit on it, and I know it's frustrating for everybody, and everybody's impatient about it, and I get all that. But I just think there's gotta be a solution to this problem, and I'm not sure what it is, but I think. I don't know how much time we've put into actually going out, looking over the project, for example, who owns the property that runs on the next street over, which is, what's that street next over?
Roosevelt?
Roosevelt, who owns the corner property there before you turn into the dirt, into the, the backyard?
Holloway?
Holloway, and is that, what size lot is that?
It's that whole corner.
It's that whole corner?
On the screen here.
You think Mr. Holloway would be interested in maybe selling some of that property? Maybe enough to get an alley in there? Maybe that's an option we could explore, and then we could build the wall there, and, and at the same time, we'd have a, a situation where he'd have access.
So who would buy the property from him?
Well, I don't know, I mean, that's something that has to come.
Responsibility would that be?
Well, who's, who's damaging the property, the business owner, we are the city, we are damaging that man's business. So, are we liable for the damage? I don't know, I'm not an attorney, but I do know that.
Are we the ones damaging?
By taking away his access.
We're selling the property.
That's right, and what are you selling with the property?
It's not our plan that could damage his business.
Taking away the access.
We're not taking away the access, we're selling the property. See what I'm saying, I mean, I, I know I'm splitting hairs, but, I'm just wanting to say, yeah, we are not taking away the access. The proposed plan, if this motion passes tonight, if, as is, as is, will be. The new property owner might be taking away the access.
Perhaps Chandler should be involved in it too.
Should be what?
Perhaps Chandler should be involved in finding a solution.
He's a smart businessman.
They're gonna own the property, they're gonna, they're gonna own it, so.
That's who's talking, Walt, Chandler in the back.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Jared, are you seeing a decision tonight?
Just, and then just to move, just to, probably, you know, I would imagine so Chandler can move on with his plans, so we, they continue their situation. But yeah, I think it's also the essence that we find some way to, and Chandler's gotta be a player in this as well, to find some resolution. To this, that is at least palatable, you know, like I say, that, you know, you may not be able to get. You know, just like it has been, but I think you agree, you know, the plan sounds fantastic in terms of what is proposed to be done. But how do we do it in a way that you are not negatively impacted to the point that it hurts your business as well? You know, that's, that's where we're at.
I think it's our responsibility not to damage the business, now, how we do that, I don't know. But I do know that maybe a possibility, again, is to look at Mr. Holloway's property, who pays for it or not, I don't know. Maybe we have to, why don't we find out, A, if he's even interested, number one, B, if he is, will he be charged for enough to go through there? And then we can look at the cost and figure out how we can do it, but I think, it's just, you're. I just don't like to see us do something and just says, hey, sorry, your, your business can be screwed over because we're gonna do what we want to do.
Nobody's saying that.
Well, we're saying it indirectly.
Well, you're saying one thing that's incorrect, you're saying we're damaging his business, but what about damaging Chandler Enterprises by saying?
How do they have a damage, they haven't put anything into it yet?
If we're gonna, you know, demand that they do something to their property they didn't want to, uh, for, for, you know, to make us feel good. You know, you, it works both ways.
It's not to make us feel good.
We are selling a property to a, a, a party that's going to, um, do great things with it, put tons of money into it. Put lots of public parking in there, help things out, and we have been talking about this for months and months and months, and you asked the question, if, well, years. You asked, is there an urgency to do it tonight? Yes, because at some point, decisions have to be made.
But you're not solving the problem.
No, the problem's not going to be solved tonight by talking about now buying another property and opening a, some other thing that we've gotta figure out. Buy somebody else's property, build a new alley, we, we are to a point here, we've worked out terms, we've talked at this at length. Well, we have, and so I think that my motion still stands, it's been seconded.
Yeah, no, we do have a motion on the table, so, is there any further discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, favor of motion to adopt the resolution of summary vacation and approve purchase and sale agreement. With Chandler Enterprises Incorporated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion passes three to one. Item number five, and this looks like Tammy?
Tammy, that's me. Tonight, the city council is, um, need, uh. Should consider to review and approve the response to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen case. Number zero three one eight from San Joaquin County Civil Grand Jury Review of Cold Cases in San Joaquin County. Um, we are, um, late in our response, but nonetheless, we are getting our response to them. So, the San Joaquin County two thousand eighteen civil, eighteen nineteen civil grand jury investigated various municipal and county law enforcement agencies. Throughout the county to determine the status of cold case investigations. This investigation was initiated as a result of recent media coverage and public interest in cold case investigations. Specifically, the grand jury sought to, one, determine the number of cold case homicides, sexual assaults, and missing persons. With suspicious circumstances, and two, examine the staffing, funding processes. And effectiveness of cold case investigations in San Sos, or, excuse me, San Joaquin County. In the course of the investigation, various administrative and investigative personnel from law enforcement agencies. Throughout San Joaquin County were interviewed, the grand jury also conducted a cold case survey. Of various law enforcement agencies in San Joaquin County, in addition, numerous materials pertaining to cold case investigation. Were reviewed, the grand jury also toured the California Department of Justice Crime Laboratory in Ripon. So, um, staff has listed out each of the findings and recommendations that, uh, were pertaining to the city of Escalon. And we have agreed with the grand jury's findings, and we have, um. Put together a policy for handling cold case investigations. And utilization of our records management system, um, database to prevent, or to define the prior. Prioritize and digitally track cold case investigations using emerging DNA testing techniques. Um, myself or chief can answer any questions that you might have to these responses, I can go through each of them if you would like. Um, but tonight, we do need approval from the council to send our response to the grand jury. And the adoption of the policy regarding cold, cold cases.
Are there any questions from the council? I'm gonna make an assumption that we all read these.
How many cold cases do we have that this would?
I think we had six.
No, technically, we have two.
Two?
Because, uh, one of them that was listed on here would probably not be technically under the definition. Cause it's an attempted homicide and doesn't fall under.
Okay.
The others are sexual assault.
Oh, you're right, yeah, it listed three in the report.
Three, but.
Yeah.
Basically would be two.
So what defines a cold ca, defines a cold case, something that, that was investigated, but there was not enough information to find out what's going on? So then it goes into a file, which becomes a cold case?
In essence, that's correct, uh, and we, we didn't have any, one of the things that the grand jury was looking at is that nobody had a written definition. In essence, the definition that I provided them was basically a definition they believed we should have, was that something over five years old? No statute of limitations, and it involves sexual assaults, homicide, those cases that primarily have no. Uh, stat, or have longer statute of limitations, in a normal case, and that we could bring further, and. Our legislator keeps adding cases to that as we go on, so. Um, we've, the policy addresses that, and our records management system will now, we have a case that meets that definition, we'll. Tag a case as cold case, so that we can search and see how many we actually have, where are open. Those would remain and be reopened and investigated, some of the other things that were being recommended by the grand jury. Take money, lots of money, like hiring additional personnel just to focus on it, uh. Being able to have somebody just concentrate on a cold case. And they're also talking about joint task force with every agency in the county. That has to be written out in MOUs, that's, we're willing to sign on when somebody comes up with a plan on how to do it.
But it does have a, a monetary impact.
Investigation of cold cases, yes, there's particular training that involves, that, for specialized training, that we would need somebody to attend. And or hire somebody who has it.
Do we have any chance for any grants or subs, uh, assistance from other agencies?
Just post-training, I mean, and it's not a grant, but that, some of that, that, most of that training post, and again, it would depend on how. Has, or how much they would reimburse us, I mean, to, uh, train an officer in that regard. Other than that, no, you're talking about, at this point, there's no grants that I'm aware of, that in. Target cold cases. It's basically looking at them, reopening, reexamining them, and having fresh set of eyes looking at them.
So what's your recommendation?
Oh, well, to answer the grand jury, I think we've met that requirement, initially. Um, we missed this in, in response, because we responded to the survey and got their report back, and. When I looked at it, it didn't. I failed to follow up with the city manager about answering, but the answers we've put together. Target their recommendations and what we can do in this regard, we've changed policy, where our record management system's updated. And our willingness to join a task force, if one is joined with the county, that we'll deal with. And then the training and that will come as money allowance.
So we're in a position that we could dictate whether or not to do it based on the amount of money we have?
At this point, I mean, our cases will stay open. I mean, they're a cold case, and if, if somehow we had new information that came up, we'd start working it again. The, the cases stay remaining and open.
Cause a new lead shows up.
Yeah, they, they remain open, and the current investigator and a new detective comes in, those cases are gonna fall over to him. And he'll, they'll remain open in his caseload, and in case anything, if new information arises, then it'll be picked up and worked. But it just, it's basically, in essence, a definition that it stays open, you don't close it, and it doesn't, they'll look at it again. Typically, in, say, a burglary case, if you have no leads in a burglary case after three years. It's closed, and you, you know, you don't touch it again, cause statute of limitations expires. Yeah, but certain cases like homicide, or sexual assaults, and child sexual assaults, the statute of limitations is extended, so you can continually work there.
So any further discussion on the, on the item? It is an actual item, so I will need a motion if we choose to approve the response.
I'd move to approve the, approving the response to the grand jury report.
I second it.
Okay, has been moved and seconded to approve the response to the grand jury report, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, case zero one three eight, zero three one eight. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? No, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes four to zero, item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. On August fourth, two thousand eight, the Escalon City Council adopted resolution forty dash zero eight. Directing staff to suspend the acceptance and processing of all annexation applications until the city develops sufficient sewer capacity. To support further annexations, as determined in the sole discretion of the city council. This action was in response to the city's adopted sewer master plan, recognizing that the McHenry trunk pipe was at near capacity with approximately one hundred. And fifty equivalent dwelling units, EDUs of capacity remaining. The council also delayed the release of the two thousand eight municipal sewer trunk and main street lift station improvements design request for proposals. Processed due to the slowing of all development and the downturn of the economy at that time. Since two thousand eight, the city has worked diligently at improving the sewer infrastructure by scheduling multiple projects over the past ten years. In the city's capital improvements program, in order to complete these projects and assist in the ongoing maintenance and debt service. The city council has approved fee increases to the city's bimonthly sewer bill. The city has completed phase one of the sewer trunk line rehabilitation project with phases two and three anticipated for completion in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. The McHenry lift station project is complete, and the flows are going through the new lift station. There are currently two annexation applications pending with the city, these projects were already in process, or their applications submitted to the city. Prior to the city council approving the citywide moratorium on annexations in two thousand eight, these project applications are as follows. Number one, parcel number two two five zero four zero two nine zero, and two two five zero four zero two eight zero. Uh, property owner, Carr Escalon Property LLC, seventeen point nine seven acres, located at Brennan Highway one twenty, which is. Pre-zoned, uh, single-family residential, or R one. And number two, APN two two seven zero four zero zero four zero, property owners are in Lutheran Church, two acres. Located behind the church property to be pre-zoned as open space. The acceptance and processing of all new annexation applications will continue to be suspended. Until the city develops sufficient sewer capacity to support further annexations, as determined in the sole discretion of the city council. The city will need to update their municipal services review, MSR, that expired in two thousand ten. In order for Lafco to consider processing these annexations. The MSR is anticipated to take approximately twelve to eighteen months to complete, and will hopefully be funded with monies granted through the SB two planning grant. Staff completed and submitted an application to HCD for that grant funding back in December, and has received a preliminary approval. Once the city is fully approved, staff can move forward with this process. Back in November, the city, uh, council accepted a wastewater treatment plant expansion study from Pace Advanced Water Engineering. With intentions to move forward with one of our modern, modernization options, pending response from the city's industries and securing of funds for the improvements. City staff will continue to meet with the industries on this item and keep the city council informed as it develops. So the recommendation, as indicated in your staff report, is to adopt resolution number XX dash twenty. Directing city staff to process the pending applications. Uh, for annexation and continue the suspension of acceptance and processing of all new annexation applications. Until the city develops sufficient sewer capacity to support further annexations. And if you have any questions from staff regarding any projects or planning processes, we'd be happy.
What timeline are we looking at for the property actually to be able to develop?
Um, well, we've been, we've been growing around numbers of three to five years, the MSR needs to be completed and adopted. Uh, by Lafco, um, it's gonna take us about twelve to eighteen months to do that, we're hoping to try to move the project. Around the same time, or coordinate them to where they'd all kind of work together, but we're, we're looking at at least. Two to three years, at least.
Minimum, I would say, three.
Minimum, minimum three, so there's still a ways out.
This is the Murphy Brothers property, right?
Correct, yeah.
I think this is great, that was awesome, um, you hit on everything, hit on the, uh, the MSR, pace study. The EDUs, the lift station, I think that this is a really, really positive thing, very excited about this. And, uh, I'm really, really looking forward to this, so this, this is great, good job.
The original owner still own that, uh, property at Mount Brennan and one twenty out there?
Yes.
And he's still interested in moving ahead?
They are, um, actually, we've met with them a few different times, um.
Throughout the years.
Throughout the years, they, they at least want to meet annually to check status. But recently, they, they do have a developer that they're working with, and of course, the developer wants to move forward, but they're not going to. Purchase the land from them to develop anything unless something happens with the land, so. And we have, according to our past res, resolution from two thousand eight, addressed the issues, which we had said were issues back at that time. Which was the trunk, the lift station, and some of the rehabilitation of the lines.
There'll be some obvious, uh, traffic implications with this, and I'm just wondering, at what point does it become a reasonable argument to. Begin to address those, uh, traffic implications, being that we're not the only entity that would be affected by those.
So we did discuss that with the developer and property owner, and they advised that they would be conducting a, a, uh, traffic impact. Report that would be submitted to the council for review, or at least staff and council, um, so at that time. Obviously, when they go through their environmental, they would. Um, so at that time, obviously, when they go through their environmental, they would submit that, and if there's any issues that need to be mitigated, staff would work with the developer on mitigating those issues or finding ways to address that issue with the project.
How how do we handle a situation where it we may not be able to handle it just between us and developer, we'll need another entity, let's say a state entity, to also cooperate with this in order to make these issues not too messy?
We talked about that as well.
I bet.
Yeah, and and they also have experience with with dealing with those state in agencies as well, and they as well, and and they know how difficult it is. Um, but yeah, we would start reaching out, you know, as soon as we're able to know something or moving forward with that and try to see. I mean, and that's why we're trying to start this now, we're proposing this now, because it is going to take a while to get situated. But once that is moving forward and the city can justify, um, they're anticipating about seventy-five to eighty homes. Um, so of course, we'd be interested in seeing that signal go in, and if we can justify that that signal would be needed, we should be able to hopefully get something through. No promises, because we're not the one that
Hmm, I mean.
Can dictate it, but it would definitely give us more than what we have currently.
I think with eighty homes there, I don't think you're gonna see huge number of people bumping up to do that, to try that, try their luck at that intersection. So that means you're gonna see California street become a huge.
And the state, I mean, when in past conversations with the state, um, you know, development was one thing that was gonna be a a a better trigger for improvement.
And just as we proceed, I think that that needs to be um front center in terms of what the community as a whole will be able to get from from this, assuming that we pass an eye and assuming that it comes to its full fruition, which, you know, we're talking about developing, so. This is an actual item, uh, if you, if we would like to adopt it. If not, then I don't need a motion, but if I, we do want to adopt this, uh, there we go.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution directing city staff to proceed with the pending annexation applications to continue the suspension of acceptance and processing of all new annexation applications until the city develops sufficient sewer capacity to support further annexations. Is there any discussion on the motion on, of the motion on the table? Audience? Yeah.
I didn't know you were gonna open it up.
Why not, why not?
Same, uh, Kirk Danziger, uh, yeah, I'm in favor of the project too with a proviso. Uh, well, question first, there's some homes right now on Brennan uh and one twenty, are they part of that project, annexation?
Yes.
Okay, I I would s- i- i- does this come in front of the uh planning commission?
At one point.
When it moves, when the actual development moves forward, it will, it will go before planning commission.
So we can talk about traffic lights and exit streets and and so forth then?
Yeah, they'll have some type of proposal, um, and and we'll have that environmental information that would be available as well
Okay.
To to negotiate at that time, yeah.
Just clarifications, thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Because if they're not, we'll proceed to vote. Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. And would anybody like me to read the resolution of the motion again? No, I see a whole bunch of heads shaking, no, okay. All those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes four to zero. Council Communications.
Wait a minute, just a minute, we got Mr. Rossi, are you here for a reason?
I I just wanted to bring this picture in for you guys, if this might shed some light on it, how things used to be and how much area that there is really behind the.
Can we have a look at that, please?
What's that?
Can we have a look at that, please?
Sure. Uh, Robbie.
I do, I just wanna see the picture.
Jumping into a connect approach.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This was given to me from the Schmitz.
Uh-huh.
This is the transmission shop.
Right.
The, if 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 we went to Mr.
Holloway.
Holloway, even if you tried to drive through here, all of this area is, right now, has a bunch of containers.
But he can clean up if he wants to.
Okay, so so you either come in this way, you have to move the containers, or you move the containers and you gain all that access.
Why don't we do this informally, because we're not, this won't be anything informally, anything like that. If we want to talk about this till after the meeting, that'd be great, okay? I know, I know, but yeah.
You know, you've got other things to do.
Yeah, well, yeah, trying to do my darnedest to keep an agenda halfway going here. Uh, Councilmember Crummick, Council Communications.
Thank you, Mayor Swift, just got a few things. Congratulations to the new officer, Travis, um, I think he's gonna be great, it's uh, it's hard to read swearing ends, it's really hard, thank you.
Poor guy.
Yeah, that one's written kind of funky too, so that one's a bit, anyways, um, I'm excited about them, I I like that family a lot, and I eat at Gerberoni's a lot, it's a great restaurant, so I recommend that too. Um, this one might be for Justin, um, there's a light, the street light right on Stanislaus and Harvest. My, I was informed that that's been out for a long time, it's just not working, it's not coming on, I guess.
Stanislaus and Harvest?
Yeah, like right across the street, right next to the high school, where it butts up against that that house.
Okay.
Maybe something checking out, um, and then if you drive down Harvest off of Stanislaus, it dead ends, and there's two of those, uh, you know, triangle things that say, you know, it's like red, but there's not, there's no sign that says not a through street, so people will drive and then turn down, and it just dead ends.
You're talking about on that dead end barricade?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe put a sign on it.
Maybe there's a little sign that says not a through street or something like that.
Sure.
Because people say that people come down there and they always have to turn around.
Sure.
Um, the next thing, um, let's see, well, I'll just jump to it. Um, I was informed by the, um, I got some news, I guess, I was informed by the city manager to uh make it public, and tonight was the night. Um, I'm gonna be taking a leave of absence um from the council um, a little bit later on in the year, and I'm gonna be doing that for military uh service. I joined the Army Reserve, and so I'm gonna be gone for a bit. And um according to, I guess, the uh the rules, it's up to the council, but um they, I have the option to fill my seat until I get back, at which point I would um finish out my term, so I wanted to just make that statement, and that's all I got.
Uh, Councilmember Crummick, thank you very much, Councilmember Merkin.
Well, as long as we're on the streetlights. Catherine and Swanson, that one uh still isn't working. I see the one at Swanson or Catherine and I believe it's Ashwood, I, it's working again. And then I noticed as I came this direction on Swanson, I think it's Glenwood, the next street up uh from Catherine. That one's not working. And then I just want to say that I was a little disappointed at the turnout we had at the community meeting. You'd think there'd be more interest in, you know, when we start talking about taxes and giving people the option of saying yes or no, that you'd think there'd be more input, but uh if, I see a lot of familiar faces here tonight, and it seems like I saw them right out there, so that's all I got.
Okay, Councilmember Merkin, thank you very much, Mayor Protem Alves.
Uh, let's see what we got. Um, did we ever get those barricades done in town, the ones that were broken up?
They're not done.
They're not done, okay. Um, what about the um signs for the city, did we put new signs up yet?
The population signs?
Right.
Those have not came in yet, they're ordered but not have not came in.
Okay, well, I think that pretty much covers all I got to say, thank you.
Mayor Protem Alves, thank you very much. To segue regarding signs, however, what has come in, thanks to a former council, council member Danny Fox, are the championship signs for uh this last year's football team. And uh he had a photo op with them and several of the players the other day, and so they're in. I will admit, I know you guys have a lot going on right now, um, but you've been forewarned, he's gonna drop them off tomorrow. And, you know, I don't know if anybody who uh is on Facebook that uh also listens to these council meetings, but I know that there was one post in Escalon Residence about uh people, what, wondering what could they do for their community, you know? And there's a lot of different ways we could do it. And I know that uh Danny Fox is a former council member, but again, him stepping up and getting those signs made, Dugos made them, um, and making it all happen, that's one example of one person just stepping up and making a big difference for the, for our community. And so there's a million ways to do it, and what, uh, he was just one of them, and so I just want to give him a big kudo for the job that he's done with that. Uh, also want to give a big uh kudo and a big congratulations and welcome to the police force for Officer Sharp. I think it's a fantastic thing that we're now, we're brought to full speed and uh feels weird to say the police department's at the full speed because I'm not too sure if it's been at the full speed in a long time, a long time. And I know full speed's a little different now than it was ten years ago, and again, I'll reiterate, the reason we chose to hire two and off, two new officers, because we needed two new officers, we're in a different role now than we were in ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, and this world's a dangerous place, and sometimes it takes a little more to keep this town as safe as it is, but that's the hallmark of this community, safety and security. And this PD does an excellent job at that, and and again, I personally hope that everybody comes out, and yeah, I'd like to see a good turnout on the third uh with Measure S, so. And finally, um, just wanted somebody, throw something out, food for thought. This has to do with the fees that we charge for variances and some things that, you know, we need to go to the planning commission for things that like, let, that say, somebody needs to also make an exception to the code. And I know that they're all flat rate, and I'm wondering um if there is any thought out there to maybe look into? What if something like the fee that we would charge for, let's say, for putting together a variance package? Okay, or an exception to a code package to take the planning commission, if we charged, if we were able to calculate it out by hour versus just a flat rate? Because it seems like we always have concerns from those who may have a fairly simple situation, but yet they're charged a flat rate, which to them is gonna be pretty high. To those who have a really complex situation, don't, they typically don't seem to have any issue with that because they know it's a complex situation. So it's just food for thought, I don't know how time-consuming that would be to charge by hour, and you can charge by hour up to a certain point where, you know, then, okay, it's a flat fee, you know, so. And the only reason I suggest that is just as a means for some people then, let's say, want to make a change to their property, they need to get a very, a um, a variance on their uh for their property, and I hope I'm using the term correctly, I probably am not. Um, but like I say, you know, in some of these situations, it does seem to be like an awful lot of money for something that's fairly simple. So I just want to throw that notion out.
So, um, I'll just remind you that when we actually adopted the variance fee, um, we did not adopt at the fully burdened rate, in fact, I think it was half.
Correct.
So, and then if you tried to do it based on your hours, you know they're gonna want to know an estimate.
Mm-hmm, wow.
And then that's, that's where it's gonna be get, that's where it's gonna get difficult.
Yeah.
I guess you, the only thing that you could potentially do would be that it wouldn't exceed your flat rate.
That's what I'm thinking about, that's what I'm thinking about, it wouldn't exceed the flat.
We have had numerous projects that if we calculated hourly, would probably go over this fee in time, yeah.
Specifically, the variance, because we did cut that fee in half based on what an average staff time it takes to to get those, so.
Sure, and in retrospect, now that I've seen a couple of situations, I'm wondering if maybe we're better off to have not cut that in half. And this is food for thought for the next time we review these. If we didn't cut it in in half, we had it fully burdened, but then you go by the hour, and I think with all, you, for the staff's sake, you may not be able to give them an estimate, of course, of course, they're gonna want an estimate, but how do you do that? But you can say, listen, it's gonna cost X amount per hour, up to X amount hours, and then we'll charge the flat, we'll charge the fully burdened rate. Something to think about just for the next time that we review these rates down the road, okay, so, anyway, yeah, just a thought, so. Anyway, if there is nothing else, which it doesn't look like there is, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight to tonight's meeting, and I will um have a good evening. I declare this meeting adjourned.